Good evening and welcome to the Region 15 Board of Education meeting for Monday, March 13. May we please stand for our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. The mission of Region 15, a collaborative community committed to excellence, is to educate every student to be productive, ethical, and engaged in a global society through proven and innovative learning experiences supported by a strong community whose decision-making is based on the best interest of all students. First, we're going to hear from our student representatives, Ms. Hazel Fitzpatrick and Ms. Grace Kinda.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start by talking about our elementary schools. We had our kindergarten information night for all the elementary schools on March 2. MES held a family reading night at the Middlebury Public Library. MES also released their spirit days for the month of March, including five different days throughout the month of March where students can get dressed up and show their school spirit. MES also had their fourth and fifth graders that raised $3,654 during Jump Rope for Heart, which is all going to the American Heart Association. PES began their Read-A-Thon on March 1. Students are challenged to read at least one picture book a day during the month of March. PES and GES hosted a family reading night, but at the Southbury Public Library on March 2. LMES is doing a PJ Story Hour, the speak on March 16. For our middle schools, RMS and MMS had a family skate night at Roller Magic. RMS is holding their second annual March Madness basketball event where students can sign up and compete against their grade level in games such as knockout, half-court games, and 3v3 games. There is no fee to participate, so everyone is welcome. For Pomperock High School, the club Impact held their second babysitting night on March 7 and was just as successful as the last one. Senior activity planning has made some headway. There is a class trip to Six Flags in the process of being planned. Prom dates and grad night dates are set as well. And the eighth grade curriculum night went very well. Students from math and science honor societies were able to speak about their experience at the high school and give tours to the incoming freshman parents, and they were also able to ask some questions.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to be giving us a sports update. The girls' basketball team lost their first round in SWCs against New Milford in a very close game. Claudia Schneider got her 1,000 points, so that was really exciting for her. And the girls are headed to Mohegan Sun for the championship this weekend, so we're really excited. We're trying to get a lot of students to come out and support them. The boys' basketball team had a tough end to their season, not making states or SWCs, but hope to make a comeback next year. The gymnastics team had states last Saturday, scoring some high points, so we're really proud of them, too. The hockey team won against Daniel Hand in a close game this past two weeks, and we're hoping that next season they come out on top. Track had many runners make it to states and SWCs. Their season ended a little bit earlier, but we were very proud of all the efforts they put into the season. We even had a runner make it to the Nike Nationals, so that was super exciting. The ski team had made it to states, the boys' team, and competed two weeks ago and had some top finishers, including Jack Phong. The boys' swim team had their SWCs two weeks ago, bringing home another SDC title. We're not surprised, but we're still very proud of them. And we're hoping that this Saturday they will bring home a state championship. It's looking very promising this year, so we're really excited to see how that turns out. The wrestling team had Juliana Morris bring home an individual state title, so that was really exciting for her, and they just finished their states and SWCs. They had a pretty good season, and we can't wait to see what they do next year. And finally, the National Honor Society is having their first blood drive tomorrow since COVID, so that's a huge step for them. And students and teachers can volunteer throughout the event and donate bloods. We're hoping to get a lot of blood for them. And then the spring sport registrations have opened up, and all the spring athletes are getting ready to put on their uniforms and having a great season. Thank you very much.
Next, we have a student performance.
So I'm going to ask Ms. Ashley Dunn and Ms. Linda Hughes to step forward for a minute. It's Music in Our Schools Month, so we thought a way to celebrate that and recognize it was to have one of our students perform. I think Ashley is going to say a few things to start.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ashley Dunn. I'm the music teacher at Aimfield Elementary School and also an instructional teacher leader for our K-12 music department. The National Association for Music Education recognizes March as Music in Our Schools Month, and we're really excited to be bringing you some performances for the month of March. This evening, we have a Pomperock High School senior who supports the end of her journey through Region 15 here to perform for you. And in a couple weeks, at our next meeting, we will have some second graders who are at the beginning of their journey in Region 15 to perform for you. And we're excited to share this video. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Linda Hughes.
Thank you. This evening, you're going to be listening to Eliza Creel. She's a very talented musician. She started playing violin at the age of four, and in her sophomore year of high school, she changed over to viola, and she hasn't looked back ever since. And every year, she has participated in our CMEA regional music and our All-State music festivals. She's been principal player there a couple of times already. This past summer, she was selected to perform with the National Youth Orchestra, where she performed at Carnegie Hall and various venues in Europe with that group. And this summer, she's very excited to be attending the Pearlman Music Program, where she'll have the opportunity to work with a renowned violinist, except Pearlman, which I would just say, well, myself. And she's intending to pursue a music performance degree, and so far, she has auditioned at several music conservatories across the country, and she's in the midst of deciding which one is the right fit for her. And so she's going to be playing a piece, and she's going to talk about the piece before she plays it.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Eliza. This is a viola. In case you don't know, it's kind of like the bigger version of a violin, and it has deeper strings, so it's like... So instead of having the E string, which is like a very high instrument, this is more of like a middle chord instrument, so it's in the middle of the orchestra, and it plays harmonies rather than melodies. However, the viola can play melodies, and I'm going to be playing one for you today. Now, I have to admit, when Mrs. Hughes asked me to perform this piece here today, I said, "Are you sure?" Because this is not really like anything you've heard before. This is called the Penderes de Cudenza, and it is a tonal, which means that there is no tonal center, and instead, it kind of goes, cycles throughout different keys. And it doesn't, it doesn't sound pleasant. It's not simple still, and you will not be crying tears of emotion at the end. At least I echo that. I'd say a tonal music is really best described as an expression of emotional discontent. So I know, this is not going to be a very happy... But I think the reason Mrs. Hughes wanted me to play is that it kind of, it shows a very different side of music. It shows how it can evoke a lot of different emotions. It almost tells people their own emotions. So I'm going to do a little rundown of the organization of the piece before I play it, because I think it'll help to understand the poem. So I like to sort of think of it as like the five stages. So what is it? Denial, anger, bargaining, oppression, acceptance. And this piece kind of goes through that with the organization. Now, I have to argue that the A of the US switch, I think the bargaining comes with the B. And it starts out very soft, very emotional. And I think that's the denial part, and it starts off with the sigh. And that is a motif that you really hear throughout. It's kind of built on that. And the first soft section, that is the denial part. And then eventually, it starts building up, and you get to the part. And here, you have a lot of different, like, gas passages, but each of them are punctuated with very loud, very harsh chords. So play an example. And then after that, you get into the anger part. So you have this one last expression of bargaining, questioning, and it just goes straight in. So I'll play the transition for you. Very fast, and this section is actually the longest part. It's two out of four beats of the piece, and it just builds. Entire piece builds, and eventually gets to this climax. And I'm going to try to play the climax part for you, so you get to hear it more than once. It's, again, not very pleasant, but... That's the height of the beats. It's written like that. I kid you not. And then after that, it sort of settles down, and then you get into, I think, the depression stage. And not very uplifting, but this is where we come back to the initial page, that minor second, that sigh. Except this time, it's a lot more strong and a lot more charged with emotion. And then this continues until the very end of the piece. And I think the acceptance is finally found in the last two notes, just two notes, and they're exactly the same as the beginning. So throughout the piece, you kind of build full circle. So it's not going to sound great, but I think you'll be able to understand it. I'll give you an explanation. So I challenge you to kind of allow yourself to be taken out of emotional journey like this. Might not be the most fun journey, but it kind of demonstrates the power of music and how it can influence the way you feel and how you could also use it to process your own emotions. I'm going to turn first.
Thank you so much, Eliza. I would say that sounded like some of our former Board of Ed meetings, where there's a lot of anger, arguing. But thank you so much for that. That was beautiful. Thank you. Next, we have a student recognition superintendent, Smith.
Just want to say thanks again to Eliza. I didn't know if there was something to do with the bond attorney being here. But we can now move to something that there's no conflict of emotion. I can introduce Mr. Plastie, who can welcome the girl, Swift.
Welcome, everybody. Eliza, that's just tremendous. That's a perfect example of the talent that we have on display here at Pomperock High School on a daily basis, and that was just amazing. So congratulations. Next, this never gets old. We were here earlier in the school year with our boys', excuse me, our boys' golf team and the, what other team won the states? Oh, well, we have a individual champion. And now we get to recognize the 2022 Southwest Conference Champions, the girls' swim team, who won that meet by the slimmest of margins over a team that has traditionally been the top team in the SWC. And just an amazing accomplishment, just winning that. And then we went out later on the following week and won the Class M State Championship. The team is led by Coach Mario Savage, Coach Lori Crane, and Coach Isabel Williams. And I would like to have them come up now and get their congratulations. We didn't have a chance to do that earlier because we had some conflicts with some players that were swimmers that were playing other sports and so on. So we finally get to honor these guys and the tremendous season that they had. So ladies, can you comment on that? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Just quickly, the boys' swim team, depending on weather, they will be going for the Class M Boys State Championship this Wednesday down at Southern Connecticut State University. And as I hope you all are aware, our girls' basketball team has advanced to Mohegan Sun and will be playing on either Saturday or Sunday for their Class L State Championship. So hopefully, we're back there in another month or so celebrating those two games and wish them, obviously, the bridge the month this coming weekend. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. All right. Next, we have the bond issuance procedure led by Superintendent Smith.
So that wasn't the whole highlight of the evening. I'll go with solid shorts. With us tonight is Glenn Roybecky from Holman Common and Barry Fernaby from Enix Investment. They will help shepherd the board through questions around the issuance of a bond. Barry, you have your handout that I can bring up when you want to start there.
I think Glenn's, well...
He makes no mind of me. If you cover me first.
Yeah, let's go to the procedural stuff.
I don't know. I prepared a calendar, which I think has passed over.
What I did was I put together a calendar that's being passed out now that tracks the state statutes as a regional school district. Your ability to borrow and appropriate for capital projects is determined by statute. And in some ways, it's similar to the way you do your budget. It's just unfortunately, instead of being able to overlap on that completely, it's got to follow its own path. And so what this calendar provides is that essentially, the steps are where the Board of Ed will first set a district meeting to have a public hearing. This is the opportunity to vet the project, what the cost, what money you're looking to potentially borrow, potentially spend, also if it's time to give the public a chance to weigh. After the public hearing, what would happen is the Board of Education would then meet, and they would either modify what the project is based on the public hearing. They certainly can change things before they do anything. But what they would do is approve what the resolution would be, which is going to be, it's the document that has the scope of the project, the dollars that may be spent on it, and it also has the ability to borrow both bonds and short-term notes. Then after that gets approved, it gets sent to a referendum. Because under state statute, when you go to borrow appropriations like this, it's going to have to go to referendum. So what this calendar does is, at the one point where we could kind of match, it's the place that referendum on the same day that your budget referendum is being conducted. There's also just a couple points that kind of went over or omitted, is that there's a public hearing notice requirement. There's days that the statutes lay out. It has to be published in newspapers if that reaches your towns, put on the website of the district. There's also a notice requirement for the referendum. This one's kind of a corpy one. And I'll just go into this one a little bit because it's a little different than probably what you're used to. It's when you approve going forward to a referendum, you have to notify the town clerks in your member towns a minimum of 30 days in advance of the referendum. You send over essentially the notice that they're going to have to publish. You also send them the directive that tells them that they're going to conduct the referendum in the member towns for you. That goes over to them, like I said, 30 days in advance. They will in turn have, basically, they have to publish it five, between five and 15 days before the referendum. So that's why they get the 30 days where you're telling them to do it. They in turn then have to publish it by 15 days. They'll conduct the referendum, much like your budget referendum at locations in both towns. There will be a, the town clerk will be there, and the moderator will be there. They will have the polling, and then they will report the results back. What I do with regards to this whole process is I put together all the paperwork for the district. What that includes is a motion that you may consider for tonight, which will simply be just to set a public hearing date. Basically directs the secretary to go post the notice for it and essentially gets the ball rolling. What I will have for you, if you choose to go forward with that, is for the public hearing, there will be the resolution itself that embodies what the project is. And I always say project, but in this case, it's multiple projects. It's a series of capital projects that are being considered for various facilities in the district. Then what will happen is, is if you choose to go forward with that, I will have the, I've got the notices prepared for you. I've got the directives for the towns prepared for you, but it's all a matter of your choosing to go forward. What I'd like to say about the authorization that this is, and I keep talking about the resolution. The resolution does two things. As a district, what you're going to do is appropriate the money. You have to appropriate the funds that you have towards the projects. What it also does is it authorizes borrowing against it. What it also does is it authorizes borrowing against it. And that's gonna be either long-term bonds or short-term notes until you get the long-term bonds. Barry will go into the uh, of the market sense side of that and what makes sense with regards to what your financial picture is. These, what you should look at it as is that this is a authorization to proceed. It's not a mandate proceed. You're in control of what you do with this. You will have the money that you may spend. You have the bonds and notes that you may go out and borrow. Sometimes people get concerned when they see the number and they say, oh, my gosh, we're gonna, you know, you want us to go out for all this money in a bond right away? That's not the case. This is something that you will have the ability to issue one, issue two. Maybe stay in notes, then go to bonds. That's gonna be, again, I keep looking towards Barry with that. It's gonna be what makes sense for the district so that district could go out and borrow if they chose, go and do the projects at a speed they wanna go at and put him in place at times that make sense. As opposed to passing something and say, you're kind of like when you pass your budget, your budget is for that year. Your operating budget, you're meant to spend it that year. If you don't, then you have to take steps for having excess funds and such. In this case, the authorization is in place that allows you to spend the money, do the projects, sign contracts for the projects as well. Uh, but it also gives you the ability to borrow in a manner that makes sense. And throughout the process, um, one thing I would emphasize is that you do remain in control for all these particular movements that I'm talking about. The decision to go forward, um, again, how to, how to proceed with any borrowing, again, that's gonna be up to you.
All right, goes to both towns. Both towns have to pass it or just a majority?
It's a majority overall. It's not, you can't end up with a split, if you will, I guess.
So when you say that the, um, so let's say that the town's passed this referendum. So that's not necessarily a mandate that we must do it. It's just an authority to do this if we decide later on to do it.
Exactly. Um, I, I think of it as kind of the okay to go ahead and do the projects that are part of the authorization. You can do what you can do monetarily. Let's just say, you know, we're talking in terms of a little bit over eleven million right now. Let's just say eleven million doesn't go as far as it used to. I guess that's, that maybe that's the way of thinking in terms of um, the way the inflation's been, the way some of these supply chain issues, whatnot. Um, let's just say that continues and pricing keeps going out, say five percent a year, six percent a year, and now all of a sudden you can't do everything that's contemplated by this. You're not compelled to go out and get more money to do all those projects. You can basically do uh, what you can with eleven million. Essentially, it kind of acts as a cap and not, again, not a mandate.
Is there, uh, does the authority given by the referendum exist in perpetuity or is there a limited time period to use that authority?
Essentially, I, there is no, there is no statutory provision that will lapse the authorization. That's when we kind of turn to common law principles and common law principles pretty much say within about three years, if something's been laid dormant for three years, then we would, we would have to look at it and see what your, your intent would be and if there's really any moving forward. Um, so if you chose to just sit on it for three years, say, you know what, it seemed like a good idea at the time and you don't wanna go forward on anything. If we can do two things, we can let it kind of run the three-year course. And then we can, under common law principles, say that it's, it's done, or we can actually go back and have the board that act to undo it.
Sorry. So the language in the referendum, how specific does it have to be relative to the project? Because you outlined, there's a lot of different elements and projects that are being considered. So what's your guidance and sort of, what, what's the level of specificity or last zero that would be included in that language?
What, and, and I will give you the question. Um, the question is really a summation. It's not meant to cover the whole horizon. Um, in, in our instance, it's gonna say something, I, I've got it, I could read it, but I, I'd probably be flapping around pages too much. But it'll say like, should regional school district number fifteen appropriate and authorize bonds in the same amount for various capital projects to improve schools and facilities within the district? That would be the caption for the voter in the voting machine or that method. But what that question represents is what the resolution says, and that's what you're presenting at the public hearing. That's what you would be approving at the district meeting, and that would be available for people from the district's offices to see exactly what the scope would be.
I hope this is the second question. Is it tied to that? No. Okay. But when, when do we have to make the decision on the language?
The the specific language.
Yeah.
You would be making that decision after the public hearing when you approve the reso, you would be approving the resolution that people would be voting on that day for twenty seconds?
For the second.
I believe, yes, yes, twenty seconds.
So it's after the public hearing, then we decide on link, if we decide to go forward with it, then we decide on language?
Correct. Generally, what would happen is is I would draft the resolution for you. There's a lot of elements in it that are rather boilerplate. That's, I think, like Josh said, fun. People are not very exciting and we don't get the crowds that come out. Or the music, or the teams and everything else. But what it's gonna have on it is it's gonna be made up of a bunch of different parts. What it does is in the first part, it will tell you how much you can spend, what you can spend it on. That's the part that's gonna cover the projects. It's also gonna have a provision in there that you can modify it. Again, as a, as a, as a way of addressing if pricing is out of control and maybe you find out we don't want a particular piece of something of that nature. Then what comes after that is your borrowing authorization is generally the next two paragraphs. That's gonna have the bond, the bonds, and it's gonna have essentially statutory type language in there. The district can go out, chairman and treasurer are gonna sign bonds. There's gonna be a seal on it if the district has a seal. Not every district has a seal. Um, it tells you, that tells people to make the decisions when bonds go out for sale. Because you can do it either two ways. You can go out into the open market and sell your bonds, or you can have a negotiated sale. Um, generally, most districts will go out for an, an open sale, an open market sale. Um, and, but that's Barry's province to really speak what's best for the district. Then what's gonna be in there is just to make bond stuff even more exciting. There's some IRS language in there that says that you have to pass what's called the declaration of official intent. That's what allows you to reimburse yourself. So let's say we're going through the process where a little bit, we get things passed on May third. We're not borrowing till, say, September. This allows you to do a lot of those soft costs. Maybe you start a project, maybe you have a little project in uh, you know, on hand that you can move things forward with. You get a great deal on a particular project, you can initiate it. And even though you may be temporarily drawing against your funds and you say, oh, my gosh, our fund balance is going crazy, you know, we can't afford this or whatever. We really thought we were gonna borrow it. That provision allows you, under federal tax rules, to be able to go back and reimburse yourself for it because the goal here is to have these, these fundings done on a tax-exempt basis. And that's what's gonna save the district money um, as much as anything else because if you went out to taxable market, well, I believe there's still if, if there's close taxable, in general, it always costs more taxes. The other provisions in the resolution are gonna essentially give uh, the ability for people to go apply for grants. Go see if they can get other monies to offset the project. And just a quick word on that, if you have a project that's within this group of capital projects, let's say you get grant money for or say somebody out of, somebody says, oh, my, my, my child did this activity and I wanna give a hundred thousand towards the project. So that would could be applied under the appropriation and what it would do is it would offset what you borrow. So if you did have any sort of donation, you did have grants that were applied to the project. Now you're, again, remember I said cap with regards to appropriation and the borrowing. You're not, just because you have money, unless you appropriated it separately and apart for other costs or something. If it was given for the project, fills up underneath your appropriation cap, but it also fills up under what you borrow.
So this is kind of segueing to my second question, if I can. So assuming that it goes to referendum, assuming that it passed. How does um, from um, a checks and balances perspective or operation, how does that work? Is this integrated into our annual um, financial audit? Like, how do we ensure that what we have as a, what we what we agree to do with the money? How do we ensure that it's been appropriately allocated, that there's appropriations, particularly since we have this like three-year period that if it's, it's sort of we have to look at this whole common law situation. I'm just trying to understand, like, a lot of money. I just wanna make sure I understand how, like, the bookkeeping happens once it moves forward to make sure there are those checks and balances in place and that everything's fine.
We would set up a whole separate fund our system, no different if we got a grant. It sits, it sits its own funding stream, its own project uh, separate from ours, our general budget. So that's whole separate report.
Is that part of the financial audit that happens?
Okay. And, and I'll also layer, I'm sorry, I, just one more thought. And this is where the tax laws come in as well. Because personally, from what I do for the district as, as bond counsel, I would probably bother go on that spending because the IRS, or things tax exempt, they don't want you to borrow and sit on money. They also don't want, this, what they're afraid of is that you go and borrow, let's say a tax exempt rate, and you've got somebody now who's investing it at money that well above, that's arbitrage. Government trumps on arbitrage. Uh, and so what, what they come up with is there's a, a series of regulations that say if you're doing a capital project, say it's over five million dollars or it's, or you borrow over five million dollars. Now we're looking at, you spend it within six months, eighteen months, two years. Because if not, government's gonna commit, and two things can happen. We can look at it and say, when you're earning arbitrage, we obviously want it back and we expect it back to the interest and sometimes I don't do. The other thing they're gonna look at, and this is a control, another control mechanism, is that under the tax rules, the IRS does not want you to go out and needlessly borrow money. And what they look at is, and what, one of the things I would do in the, as part of the paperwork of an issue is that you are only supposed to borrow what you need. That's why I was trying to say that you can break up, this is not go out and borrow an eleven million and then let's hope we chip away at it over three years or something. Or four years or five years. The idea is that you borrow it as you need it. So if you've got, say, three million or four million dollars worth of projects underway, you're gonna borrow three or four million dollars. You're not borrowing full, say, eleven. And so what happens is, is the government looks at it and what they have are what they, they call reasonable expectations. And what those do is we look at, at the time of issuance, and I'll be asking the business office, you know, they'll say, we wanna borrow, say, five million. I'm gonna respond by saying, okay, can you show me this reasonable? Show me that you're, you actually intend on spending that money. First, I'll ask for two years. They allow, this will get confusing if I say they allow three years. But you can go out and do what you wanna do for three years, but they make you pay after two. So a little bit quirky and, and you don't really have to worry about that. But the thing is, is I'll be pushing to make sure that we're within exception. And if not, then we really have a hard talk on the next time you wanna go issue it because that's my job. It's part of bond counsel is, I, I kinda get to be the heavy for the government, if you will, in some respects because I make sure that you comply with all the rules to keep the tax exemption. Because what the, the heavy big hammer is in this is that, let's just say you issue bonds, you don't spend it. Now you've got an arbitrage problem. You don't address your arbitrage problem. Now you've got something that the IRS is gonna say, you know what? The tax exemption. Well, they're not gonna just say, hey, we found it in year five. Straighten out, we'll give you a penalty and let's move forward. They're gonna say, uh-uh. You've essentially cheated us for the last five years. And like most audits, let's say businesses and such, they're gonna say, who do you think's gonna make up all that taxable interest and all that they should have been getting paid on? We're talking to you. We can either chase all your bond holders or we're gonna make you pay. And that's what my job is to make sure it doesn't happen.
Get back to, you know, authorization to borrow eleven million and we get a hundred thousand dollar grant. So that means our authorization now is only to borrow ten million, nine hundred.
If you've applied, if it was, if it was money given to you a grant for what's described in the authorization, yes, but you can't double debt. That is the answer.
So my question uh, involves the scope you're talking about earlier, like when we draft the resolution. And I think you've seen some graph language, maybe you haven't noticed the public here notice that you gave us, shows us a paragraph where we kind of list, let's say we have twenty projects and you include all those twenty projects in the description of what the scope is. So did I hear correctly that even if we scope twenty projects, but our money only gets us to fourteen or fifteen on that list, that's okay?
Correct. It's a, again, it's a cap. Right. Even in the scope. So, you know, we went out and what we put together was actually a solid eleven million dollar figure. That did tie to estimates that the district had put together for those projects.
Sure.
Um, I think the realist of all of us kind of says, what we think today, we, like, what I was trying to say is that we get two years down the road. And we find out that, I, I guess the, the, I don't know, I, I don't mean try to sound sorry or anything, but they, you know, eleven million doesn't go as far as it did, or at least where we thought it was going two years ago.
Right.
Um, yes, you would certainly scale back what you could do under that list of authorizations. You can't just go and do it on something that's not part of that appropriation. It's not free money at that point.
Sure.
Um, but you would be confined to what's in there.
Okay, so my next question then is, so there's no penalty for optimistic scoping? Like, we, we know today those twenty projects aren't gonna couple up, right? But they're in there. Like, so is there any issue of bad faith, knowing that we're gonna list all this out? Um, knowing that we're probably not gonna get to all twenty unless, you know, we're in a much different market environment?
Correct. It, it's not a bad, it's not an impermissible and it's not a bad thing to be. And I can give you kind of the bad situation is when you're, say, you were doing you own aquarium in the school here and you put in for, say, four million, you put in, you think that that's what a new aquarium costs or something. I don't, I don't know what they cost. Sure. But you do four million and then you find out that it's really six million. Now you can't even do a project because there's nothing you can go back, you can go against with, on that. And you can't do something that's gonna stand on its own.
Right.
So at the end of the day, you're kind of stuck with a moot thing. And that's one of those things where I would come back and say, you know what? It really makes no sense having that. Let's not do the, the, the common law. Let's wait three years and let it last. Let's get rid of it and then let's think if you wanted to do something else. Because you could always add and amend it later on. It would have to go the same process if we were amending what, say, think this gets approved through, you know, May of this year. You find out that you wanna add either money to it or add another scope to, another project to it or something, you have to go back through the same process.
So one last question of this name, and that is, and I'm sure you probably heard, we have another opportunity perhaps next year to add a net mutual bond because we have another large chunk of debt service coming off the books. So we may be having the same discussion again this time next year about another pot of money. Um, if we have scoped something in this first bond, realize that we probably won't get to it. But it's time to scope a potential second bond. And you have the same project scoped in two different bonds at the same time?
What, what I would say, or what I would recommend, just to keep it clean, is that you go and you go through the process that second time in that next one. I would say that I would have the board make the determination that the scope of, I'll just say the twenty I would say that I would have the board make a determination that the scope of, I'll just say the twenty free authorization. Should be recognized as being reduced by that part, by that particular project.
And then that before.
Um, and that's something that's within the the confines of the resolution. That's to 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 say that project's out of this one and is in the other one. That you just have to act as a board. You don't have to send, that's not a a a referendum type item. But when you go that second time, you're right, we'll be talking again.
Thank you.
So um, you probably know, we've got our, the referendum is normally scheduled at that time for our just our annual budget. Possibly, you know, there's gonna be a another question on there for the bond. If the budget passes and the bond does not pass. Is there, does the, say, the cycle start over again? Or like, what would what would be, like, is it just dead in the water or can we say, you know, we're gonna try again with another uh. Referendum on just the bond in six months, so we're gonna wait a whole year like.
We would essentially retee up the process again, because essentially what got failed, if you want to say that as a, use that as the verb. It it's done and dead if it misses that at the result, at the referendum. You want to go back out, say, in three months or something. I mean, usually i- i- I don't know, you can tweak it a little, you can do what you want to amend it, maybe make it a little more palatable. You find out that somebody doesn't want project B in there because that just really bothers them. And you say, okay, we maybe, you know, at that later date, we realize, well, we couldn't afford project B anyway. So let's take it out and and do something along those lines. You can certainly do that and when you retee it up. And then basically it would go the same sort of schedule.
And then, let's say, for some reason, the budget fails, but the bond passes. Um, and then, so now we're dealing with the budget problem. And it is conceivable possibly that the money that is that is that we're intending to use to pay for the bonds. You know, like if we, you know, when it was six hundred grand, we're gonna towards, you know, these bonds. Now like, well, geez, now we need that six hundred dollars because we've got hundred thousand dollars because we're gonna lower our our budget. So now we're like, well, we would have done the bond, but the budget failed and maybe we'd like to apply the bond to the budget. Are we allowed? So now we've got a, we've got a bond and we've approved and a budget that failed, so we still need to do the bond. Are we tied to it once it passes?
No, again, it it is a permissive passing here. And that's why when you end up with, and Barry will go into this as far as. What debt is debt servicing is falling off on your schedule, how to layer in without making, you know, you have to go back to your member towns. And, you know, they're going crazy because they seek money or, you know, and such. You know, what's gonna happen with this is you can, again, permissively, you can do a four million dollar bond to keep things flat. You don't have to do the eleven to go up too high. Um, you're gonna be in control of that.
And then my last question is. So I have the, it's it's kind of like what Tom was asking, so I pulled it up. Uh, yeah, this is the eleven point two seven five million covers and specifically mentioned schools. You know, HVAC at the school or something at the other school. Just so I'm clear, uh. Essentially, this is covering five of the seven schools in our district. For most, for the big, big ticket items. Because it, we had discussed as a board that perhaps in a year from now, an additional debt servicing money is free up. That we may seek to um. Actually build a whole new school. So we purposefully did not really mention. So to replace two of our seven schools, right? So we, this this sort of focuses on five and we're like, well, we're gonna deal with the other two in a year. So let's say that kind of never happens for whatever reason. So now we've kind of got these two extra schools, two two schools, where now we might say, geez Louise. Well, we can't do some of this stuff that you wrote out, we need to do, we need to spend that money on these two other schools. And you like, great, they're not mentioned here. This seems explicit, so. Is that, again, something that we can come back and retool in a year and say, you know, we we never mentioned Poprock Elementary at all in here. But we'd like to, it it needs a new.
Let's just say you find something that you want in addition that's not in this. Because again, if it's not here, you can't just go and spend bond proceeds, other than what's authorized here. You would have two options that you can do. You can go out and amend this one. Add to it, whether it's at the project, maybe you find out that you don't need any more than you're letting to. We'd really rather do this within that authorization. Can do that, it would have to go through, again, the whole process where you were, again, authorize it. Or it can be done as a standalone authorization, something, you know, say, instead of doing, you were saying two schools. Instead of doing like that whole rebuild, you say, we're not gonna be, that that just doesn't make sense right now. We've gotta just kind of tread water for a little bit. You know, the question becomes, what's gonna tread water then? And you say like a roof and an and an HVAC system and then that buys us five years or six years or something like that. Or then we would do something similar to this where instead of this list of projects that were identified earlier. We would do that project at that time.
And I apologize if I'm asking for, I asked three people, you say authorize, so that is not. A referendum, that's a, what is the authorization piece exactly? Like, cause I'm looking at this as steps and then you described what would happen sort of after. Where where is the?
This, this is what puts the appropriation, the ability to spend on those projects. And the ability to borrow in place. That does nothing to do with the after, where the bond issuance just take places, fall after this. This is Barry will come in, this is where when we're talking about, you don't have to go all out for one, you can do two, you can layer however you want. You're in control of where you spend the money. This is what gets you to that point where you can start making those decisions. This is purely um procedural, as again, as set out by the statutes. And this will get it to that point where you've got that permission. And and I'll say, it it's an authorization, but it authorizes the appropriation and it authorizes the bonds.
Simply put, it's simply a board meeting and a decision. Like, or or do we need to have other public hearing?
Oh, if you wanted to do another, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Again, this this decision to repurpose. If you want to do a roof on another school, it's not listed there. We would have to go back, back to.
You would do it, yeah, you would do this schedule, but you don't have to do it tied to your budget referendum. You can do it later in.
So we would have to go back, we would have to. Yeah, you'd have to go back.
Correct. Going back, amending, doing a new or or doing.
It to the voters.
Yes.
To thank, to the voters, like we could go back to whom? Yeah, that would say what's a board decision.
Every capital appropriation that comes with a bond authorization has to go through a couple things. First, it's you conduct a district meeting with public area. That's the, let's all, let's let's kick the tires, let's look at what's inside this this resolution. Are people happy with the project? Are people happy with dollar amount? You know, are enough people happy? Sometimes, I know you're not gonna make everybody happy, I guess. But that's what the dis, that's what the public area is gonna do. Any project, any amendment, anything is gonna have to go through that. Then after the public hearing, because you can't approve the resolution until after the public hearing has occurred. Because the the concept is, is that you're gonna take in what the public heard. If if somebody comes up with that, oh my gosh, why are we doing this moment? And then you go, you're right, that's to give you, that that's the feedback that the public hearing is giving you. Once you approve the resolution, you're approving the resolution, but you're approving it to be also to be sent to the voters. Because even though you've approved it, and even though you might think this is the best thing for the district at this time. Unfortunately or fortunately, you have to go back to the voters. And then that's why when you do that authorization, that's where that thirty days out to the town clerks. Five to fifteen, they publish and then you, they conduct the referendum in the two separate towns.
So then just to, just kind of what Thomas, I got to over scoping and to use your example of, let's just say, you know, the roof of the HVAC at some school. That's not, to note down, you know, buys us five years. Where did the board think about those really critical things at those other two schools? Just in case a year from now, the bond to fix those doesn't pass and now we need a new.
Well, I I'll be frank, I don't usually recommend doing phantom, if you want to call it that, authorizations. Like I said, this one had dollar figures attached to it with those projects. So, you know, call it realistic, call it hopeful, there there's at least something that it ties to that that's that's there. Putting on extra projects just to kind of get it over the finish line. There is a back to common law concept of hoop scrapping. And they really kind of frown, common law has frowned on kind of this over. You know, this isn't meant to give you. This vast array of projects to pick from. It's because what you've got to also think in terms of is, what does the reasonable voter, what do they think they're approving? And the thing is, is you don't want somebody to come back and say, you know, geez, this this laundry list of projects that you gave me. And then there's ones, I don't even know where this goes. You know, you know, you get kind of a bad reaction and it 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 could be a bad political thing. And when I say political, I mean just voter response. And again, it's really not. Again, it it does open it up for questions.
I I think, um, just to get back a little bit on what Steve was saying, it's like. State of some of our facilities is in disrepair. So it's kind of like you have to pick which one we're gonna address. And we're we're specifically not choosing to address two schools. Because they're a much, it's a much bigger discussion and bigger problematic issue. So we're hoping to do this one first, then hopefully tackling the other two schools next year. So, but I guess what he's saying is like, um, so one of those schools needs to be moved soon. You know, so what happens if that school, we need that roof done? You know, are we, are we stuck in having to go through another referendum to get a bond to address those issues in that school?
And the answer, I, I, yes, I, I wish I could give you a better one, but.
I think we need to know that.
You know, my job is to correct the answer, not the 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 field book.
It has to be referendum, it cannot be a town meeting for amendments.
Yeah, you're under title ten of the statutes, which takes you out of seven and three, which is what municipalities work under. And that's why you have kind of your own series of steps that you have to take.
We could always say, we need a roof, we either covered our budget or we go back to town and say, we want more money. So we put roof on this school, separate from.
We're hoping never to do that.
We're putting a roof when I'm doing a new school, right? Like, right? Like, that's the thing, it's the choice, we make it one, it's time. Three million on a roof, then we're not gonna tear it down a year later and say, okay, now we're gonna do something else. Like to figure that's not like appropriate use of terms, right?
I don't know if this is premature. But what, assuming that this, you know, we have a public meeting, go through the schedule. We have a referendum, that referendum passes. And then we go out to bid. You know, we're gonna go find somebody who's going to do this bond for us. What what does that look like? We get that information, you know, here's your, here's the various offers you perceive for this bond. Does it come, does it come attached to names? Is it, is it gonna be clear like who the winner is from that? Or is it gonna be a map problem of, well, this one was this percent for X years and this percent for X years.
I'm gonna give a lead in to Barry on this, because this is really kind of his state. But I can tell you that if we're doing, say, bonds, everything is so electronic these days and it's so above board. We would see the bids, we would see what the bids cost. Obviously Barry would kick in and want the cheaper one. We also, in the, we would prepare a notice of sale, which is what I would do as part of that process. And we definitely limit it to qualified bidders. So, you know, kind of that old adage that if it looks too good to be true, it probably isn't. You know, we make sure of that and I was gonna say, I'll pick it over Barry to the sale, but.
Well, you you summed it up well, yeah, it's all above board, it's a competitive bond sale. And we typically surprise you ahead of time where we think the market is going. So uh, it's very clear, very clean and straightforward and you see the rate. And the bidders actually don't know what projects you are, you know, gonna allocate those funds to. They just wanna come in and you're bidding to give you the lowest cost of all.
So they don't know it's us?
Oh, they 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 know too, you you'll have.
And they know what projects.
They'll know what the authorization is because we disclose it in the official statement. You're a public body, people are gonna know what we talked about tonight. This is all above board, so they'll know what you want to do with it. And what they'll be looking probably, we're focusing on is, they'll look to me, because I'll give an opinion. When the bonds are sold, in my opinion, is kind of a twofold piece. What it does is, it says, first, it says that you validly acted as a body here in Connecticut. And did what you were supposed to do to authorize both the appropriation and the buy, the borrowing authorization. And then what they also ask from me is an opinion on the tax side of it, is it, can we purchase these and give them a tax exempt rate? That's all gonna be in a, in a document that would be prepared in in advance of a sale. And what that's also gonna happen is, you're gonna put forward, frankly, your best foot. And you're also gonna put your your member town's best, I guess, feet forward. Because what's gonna happen is, is you're gonna describe who you are, how you operate. You're gonna have your financials in there, you're gonna have your town's financials in there. And frankly, a lot of the decision making is really gonna be how solid of a district you are. How well-run you are, how good the board is, how well the finances are covered. And what's your, what they're gonna perceive as your ability to repay. They rarely are gonna look at the projects and go, wow, these are pie in the sky or, or, you know, gee, they're taking care of, what, five schools? But not the other two, what are they gonna do now? They're they're not getting that deep into the weeds, but it's, it will be out there in some form.
Yeah, example, we did a bond refi three years ago and we had, we had five bidders. West Street TD Bank, Key Bank, Capital One, people's bank.
So I have a follow-up on those bidders. We're we're bidding in general, right? So given kind of the economic situation into last week and this week and headwinds around liquidity and banks pulling back on borrowing. And that could be short term, long term, right? How do we see that affecting us as we go out to this? Do we think things are gonna kind of stabilize? Outwards? Like, I just don't want us to do all this and then there potentially be a problem um around that.
Right, I mean, it it is kind of choppy out there these days, absolutely. You know, in in the last several years, interest rates were at all high lows.
Do you want to go through your hand up here? I don't want stuff, you kind of had in your presentation.
Oh, yeah.
Do I look through that?
Yeah.
And and this is where, with what you're saying, with the headwinds that are currently. We we had a little bit ago where when Fed was upping interest rates. A lot of, a lot of municipalities backed off because they said, wow, where are the rates gonna go? Some some pushed it because they said, well, rates are gonna go up, we must get in while they're low. Others kind of got scared, but that's where the, I'm in control of when and how much you go out and work. That's, that's in, you know, as best as Barry can guide you, that's that's in your hands.
Right, absolutely, and um. Just a quick comment, you know, I I've been doing this for like twenty-five years, that was the most helpful overview of the. Wow, I usually hear these attorneys talking, I can't really make that to feel so bad.
And I didn't have to wake you up.
Um, but 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 you're right, I'm interested, you know, this is, I wanted to put. But you're right, I'm interested, you know, this is, I wanted to put together some scenarios or options to see what the proposed debt service would look like. Typically, before we do that, I just say, we'll cover two topics quickly, just the overall level of interest rates and your bond rate. And you made up a good point, the overall level of interest rates. You could be triple A or have the lowest rating. But if you're issuing bonds in an environment where rates are super low, you're going to get a great rate. And on page two is benchmark, is a plot of the 10-year US Treasury bond. It's a benchmark for long-term borrowing costs. This chart looks back 53 years, so those are all great times. See, in the middle of the, to the left-hand side is when interest rates peaked in 1981, a very high rate. And since then, oh wow, that's great. So rates have kind of generally come down, they bottomed out in March of 2020. Three years ago. And rates were super low. Almost any community could borrow at super low rates, we're refinancing bonds that were issued at 2%.
1.28.
You know, the timing was just unbelievable on that. But you could see on the far right-hand side of this graph, you could see that the 10-year yield has gone up. Again, it's higher than where it was, but from a 53-year perspective, I would still say rates are still relatively low from a long-term perspective, but much higher than they were last year. Now, the other factor that comes into when a municipality borrows is the credit rating. Just like all of us, we have a credit score. We get a mortgage or a car loan, they look at our credit score, the higher your credit score, the lower your borrowing cost. It's the same for a municipality or for a regional school district. Middlebury is rated AA plus, AA1 from Moody's. So the rate scales on page three is from San Marcos and Moody's to main rating agencies. Typically, a regional school district is rated one notch lower than the highest member town. That's my understanding, I don't even think Southbury has a rate because they don't typically borrow a lot, Southbury. But Middlebury just issued bonds. Again, they're one notch for AAA. My guess is that the school district, the region would be one notch lower than Middlebury or AA2. And again, the rating agencies do that because you don't have direct taxing power. I think in a strange way, you actually have more security than a municipality because any bonds you issue are general obligations of both of the member towns.
Yeah, here's what, if you were, like normally what happens is a municipality pledges their unlimited ability to levy taxes on property owners in their town. You don't have that ability. What you do is you, in essence, pass your budgets or your costs and you, for lack of a better word, you bill the towns for their proportion of what they, they owe. They in turn pay that with that same pledge, that unlimited ability to tax property. So when a district goes out to the market, while you you will say that you're pledging, in essence, that unlimited power of your member towns to pay back the bonds that you're issuing.
So it's still be a very high bond rating, it should generate a lot of interest on the bond segments. Now, on page four is, I think you are all aware, this is a graph of the district's existing debt service payments. So as a financial advisor to a number of municipalities, I the question that comes up a lot is how much debt can we issue without our debt going up? And a lot of times, some communities have a lot of debt already to begin. So, well, listen, if you issue more bonds, your debt's going to go higher. Some communities have no debt. They say, listen, what could you put together to mitigate the impact of any new debt? And if you have no debt already, there's no, there's nothing put together to mitigate the impact because you're starting at zero. So if I had to pick a situation, the best situation to be in, I would say you're in the best situation. You're in a situation, within the next three years, your existing debt goes to zero. So now, in my opinion, is the optimum time to consider doing a bond issue. Because you could layer it in and mitigate a good chunk, if not all of that impact, depending on the size. So to go forward, it's a little bit busy. But what on page five is what I call scenario one, spreadsheet. And it shows on the left-hand side, column B, again, is your existing debt. So currently for fiscal '23, we're in now, your debt's about 1.5 million dollars. Next year, that if you do nothing, if the district does nothing, your debt service next year for '24, fiscal '24 will drop by $655,000. And then the year after that, it drops about $115,000. And then after that, it drops 810,000, then it goes to zero. So the next three years, debt is dropping off like a rock. So I assume for this one scenario, that in column C, the district keeps your debt flat. For this scenario, you budget the same as your current debt right now, 1.5 million. And there's hundreds of possible scenarios, but I'm not going to go over all of them today, just to keep it simple. Just scenario one, I assume the 11.275 million is passed. And that, in this scenario, that the district issues two separate bond issues. You could issue short-term notes and everything, but to keep it simple, just a bond issue, $5 million in October of this year, October of '23. Principal is shown in column E, expected interest in column F. And then in October of '24, you issue the remaining portion, there's roughly 6.2, 6.3 million. So two separate bond issues, the debt service goes from left to right. And column I is your total proposed new debt service. And then in column J is your existing and proposed debt service together. Now, the good news is if you look in column K, what happens if you do this scenario based on interest rates today? Is that in column K, it's all in red, meaning your debt service would actually decrease each year going forward. So your debt would not go any higher than it is right now. That's very rare thing to say when I do debt analysis, that you could borrow 11.2 million and debt service would not go higher. And it's not because interest rates are where they are, it's not because your bond rate, because your distant debt is dropping off. And in fact, in fiscal '24, this were to happen, your debt would be about $540,000 less than the 1.5 million that you budgeted. And the reason for that is typically when you issue bonds, and I assume you issue bonds in October, project passed. Any point in time, if you were to issue bonds in July, August, September, October, typically the first principal payment becomes due a year later. If you issue bonds in August, or I'm sorry, in October, the first principal payment comes due October of '24, which is really fiscal '25. So if you look in column F, or actually column E, you don't see any principal payment in fiscal '24. You only see a six-month interest payment in column F. So that's the only debt service you would have in this particular scenario.
Barry.
The 1.5 million. Is that just this bond or is that also the bond that's coming due in three years?
Which column are you referring to?
The 1.5 million told that 2024.
Yeah, column B, right on top.
Yeah.
The debt of just this one is coming due now, or is that also include?
No, that's just existing debt as of right now, so that's.
That includes both bonds, the one that's coming, so this borrowing isn't taken into account. The 50 million or whatever we'll have to borrow in two years for the new school.
No, no, this is only concerning your existing debt in column B and potentially 11,275.
What I'm getting is existing debt is the payout of this current bond, which is ending now. Including the debt for the bond that's going to end in two or three years, correct?
So it's the 655 and then additional, right? It's another 925.
Right, so.
It's like two steps.
Right, so the existing debt is these two current bonds. But the paying down is only the one, not including we borrowing again in three years. So this doesn't tell the whole story.
No, I'm taking it one step at a time. So for now, this is looking at your existing debt bonds that were issued a long time ago that are being paid off, that's in column B. And it's assuming that the 11.2 million dollars is passed, like Glenn just went through. And that you actually issued the bonds in October of this year for these new projects that have yet to go to referendum.
Right, but the saying we're reducing the bonds going down to zero isn't true because we're going to borrow again.
We didn't ask them to prepare.
I'm not, but he's saying the total 1.5 million isn't just this bond that's coming due now. It's this bond plus the other one.
Yes.
So reducing the debt it's only for two or three years, it's not going to keep going because we're probably going to borrow again. So this is.
Well, I'll get to that, there's a couple of them. But again, in this scenario, in columns E, F, G, and H is the permanent financing of the proposed 11.2 million dollars that you're considering going to referendum. And it assumes that, so that instead of your debt service ending in fiscal '25, it now becomes column J. It would have your existing bonds that were issued a long time ago and that are running off in three years. And that 11.2 million dollars of new debt service that in theory will be approved potentially later this year. And that would be reflected in column J. Now, if you continue to budget 1.5 million dollars a year, your debt service, you won't need that 1.5 million dollars. You would only need the numbers reflected in column J.
I'll come back and say, yes, we will need 1.5.
Right, I'm going to get to that, we're going to get to that. But this is just 11.2 million dollars. So if you just approve 11.2 million and don't approve any new debt, the second phase that you talked about. This is just one step at a time. That your existing debt would not go any higher than it is now, in fact, it would be lower than it is now. And just a graph of that, if you reflect it on page six, that black line going across is your existing debt service payments now. Which is right on top of that blue bar in fiscal '23, which is where we are right now. In fiscal '24, your actual debt would go down. But I would, in this scenario, recommend you keep your budget flat at 1.5 million. You wouldn't need the whole 1.5 million. In fact, you would have money left over that could be used to mitigate other areas of the budget. Or in theory, could be used in a deposit into a capital reserve fund or a debt service reserve fund to mitigate this phase two, or phase three, or phase four potentially move on. And then you could see that that service would drop off each year after that. So if someone were to come up to me and say, we can't approve 11.2 million dollars, it's going to cost too much. Someone could say, from a debt service only perspective, now I'm not talking about your whole budget, but just debt service. Your debt service would go no higher than it is now, in fact, it would go lower. And again, that's unbelievable because it's very rare that this happens. You're in a unique situation because your debt is dropping off. Now, some communities come back and say, listen, we don't like debt. We don't want to improve the school roof or the schools, we want it to pour everything. We want debt to go to zero and not worry about it. You can let debt go to zero, capture that decrease in your existing debt payments and use it to mitigate other areas of the budget. Absolutely. And that's a decision for the board to make, to say, listen, that's option A. Or option B is, I mean, listen, once that debt goes down, if we ever have to do something again, we're going to be starting from zero and it's going to go up. So that's a decision for you all, which option you want to go, let it go to zero or to slot new debt. So this is scenario one, I recommend keeping the debt at 1.5 million. Hypothetically, if we go to page seven, it's the same kind of format. But if you look at column C, I say, well, instead of budgeting 1.5 million next year, none of this is a recommendation, this is just for you all to look at. So what if we lower our debt service budget from 1.5 million down to roughly 1 million dollars? So you lower your debt service budget. Now again, once you do that, it's hard to get that money back because it goes somewhere else. But nonetheless, if you do lower it to 1 million dollars and you do issue those two bond issues again in the middle of the page, you follow it over left to right. For fiscal '24 again, is not a problem. You would still have enough money, you lower your debt service to a million dollars. The problem is, when that bond issue in column B kicks in in fiscal '25, all of a sudden, your debt service goes up as reflected in column J to 1.4 million. Which means in fiscal '25, you would have to increase your debt service budget by roughly 335,000 dollars. You'd keep it flat for next year. In fact, you would reduce it for next year. But then the following year, you'd have to increase it again, and then the year after that, it would decrease again. So it'd be a little choppy. I use the, an example like a roller coaster, it goes up and it comes down, you know, it doesn't stay relatively flat.
That's a question. Would there be any additional variables or situations where, let's say, we go with scenario one and we keep that budget debt at 1.5? Would there be any situation or variable where that budget debt would need to change? This is based off of a projection long-term, right? And you're showing that decrease. But like, what, do we agree on that? Like moving forward as part of this scenario? Or what if we say, okay, we're going to start at 1.5, but in two years, oh, we got to change it and it's 1.0? Like, is there any sense? Probably not.
Well, every year is its own year, right?
Right, so how do you, that you have to agree to keep that flat in order to see these returns, right?
We're going to be contractually obligated once we issue the bonds. Yeah, so once we issue them, we're contractually obligated to be working this based on the interest rate, they probably think the environment is yielding, I would have to change a little, but it's not going to change once we bond.
So that's, it would be no additional extremist variable or factor that would change the projection of what we agree to.
Once the bonds. Yeah.
Okay.
But yeah, you can refine interest segment as well.
The page 600,000 for this one. What would we pay for the other one? 900,000?
25.
So, so if that bond just stays the same, that second bond, and let's say we find us keep the 900,000. Then 900,000 is going to go every year, so it's not going to come down.
Well, no, so that 900,000 comes off in two years. But if we do the same thing, we say, okay, we're going to keep the 900,000 and borrow again.
Then that 900,000 is flat all the time, so then, okay, it's going to go down.
Correct. So.
Correct.
Column K basically would stay at 1.5.
Right, that's all I'm saying.
These scenarios assume no additional borrowing, obviously.
It's just what's in front of us right now.
You would have additional room when you go.
This really doesn't tell the story because we're never going to get there.
Well, we could.
We could if we don't.
But I agree, yes, it is a long-term projection of something that I don't think anyone sitting here is like, that's the best.
Yeah.
Right. But you have to go with the model that we asked Barry to build.
As soon as we can make that. So again, just on page seven, in this scenario here, with your existing debt running off, 11.2 million dollar approved, you could lower your debt service budget from its current level this year by half a million dollars, if that helps you. But then things get a little choppy out there. Then in fiscal '25, you'd have to increase it, and then the following year, it would decrease again. So get a little bump in.
Most municipalities, Barry, they generally budget on the scenario one model, correct? Usually, and you represent a lot of municipalities.
Right, right, I do, and everyone's different. But typically, if I were to talk to a municipality and they say, we want to borrow 11.2 million dollars. And I came to them and said, you could do that and keep your debt flat. They would build a statue for me outside, because wow, that's great, I mean, that's unbelievable, sorry.
You got to bend your state.
I mean, people say, well, how could that be? It's like, almost like having a car loan, right? So your loan payment expires, you're paying $400 a month. That loan is paid off, you get a new car that comes in at $400. So, I mean, it doesn't, you still pay the same, but you invested in it. You're investing in the community and you're doing these capital improvements and your debt is staying flat. Now, some communities are lower per county, they say, wait a minute. And everybody's different, they'll say, if our overall budget's going up 2 or 3% here, well, it's okay if our debt service goes up 2 or 3% too, because we want to do a lot more capital projects. As people move into this community for the schools and we want to continue to invest, and we do bond issues every year. So Stanford does bond issues every year, Newtown does bond issues every year, Chester does bond issues every year. So people are used to it. They say, listen, and even if there's a year or two where debt service does go down, they say, whoa, 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 we're not going to decrease our debt service budget to help other areas of our overall budget. We're going to capture that and put it into the capital non-recurring fund or a debt service fund because we know we have other projects coming down the pike and we want to use that money to mitigate those costs. So debt service is its own kind of budget itself where they look at it. As opposed to just letting it go down and down and down and use it for others.
But we will do a scenario with the debt service, right now, it was 1.5 million, it's 600,000, or 650,000.
It's just going to stay flat then, 650,000.
Well, yeah, and just do the scenario that way, forget the total, forget that other bond.
And just what I think about debt service, you know, my mortgage payment is the same in year one, year two, year three, year four, because principal's pushed out. And you're paying mostly interest in the early years and mostly principal in the later years. But if you look at those graphs, it decreases each year because as you pay off principal, the interest goes down. So that's why you see a downward trend for debt service. So just moving on, on page eight is a graph of that option too. So you see, your. So ju- ju- just moving on, on page eight is a graph of that option too. So you see, um your current. Um debt budget of one point five, that 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 black arrow on top goes down. So you save half a million dollars roughly. You could use it to mitigate other areas of your budget. But then if you look at fiscal twenty five, your debt service spikes back up again. So you're gonna have to find another three or four hundred thousand dollars to add back into debt the following. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So so um moving on to scenario three. Is uh very similar to scenario two. In column C, the the this, the region does lower its debt service from one point five million to one million. And you still do two bond issues in the middle. But um using some of the flexibility that the law allows to tweak those bond issues. Like, uh you could skip a principal payment, structure it a little bit differently. That's why if you look in column E, I actually skipped the first principal payment for both bond issues. Again, I'm not recommending any of these scenarios, but you have a little flexibility to tweak it. So what's the bottom line of scenario nine is very similar similar. Option three is similar to option two, except for this little tweak. But if you if you look at it all the way over to column K, it's all red again. Meaning that by moving debt around, it is possible to keep your debt service no higher than a million dollars. By pushing some debt out. We see a graph of that on page ten, where you could lower your debt service from one point five million down to one million. And and by by pushing debt out a couple of years and layering it in, we could keep it at that lower level.
But you don't recommend that, right? You just said that you don't recommend. So why?
Right, because it goes back to what I think someone else was saying before. If there's more projects coming down the pipe that you're considering. This this mitigates that option because you're now at a lower level. You you you've taken a half a million dollars out of debt service. And you used it for somewhere else and it's not coming back again.
It's costing us more.
You're right.
If you look at five, ten times, you're paying more on interest or just. We're just taking a problem today and making.
And pushing it around.
Which is exactly how. You take a problem up today to push it out.
We, you bring up a point, you know, and and that's the whole theme I tried to touch on already. You all have to look at it and say, listen, do we want our debt to go down and mitigate everything else that's going up? Whether it's energy costs, wages, uh whatever the case is, right? Or do you wanna say, listen, our our debt service is one point five million. You wanna try and keep it flat. So if people say, you know. Are you investing in the community? Yes, we're gonna keep that flat. We wanna invest in the community again. Now, my my last scenario on on page eleven. Which I call scenario four is, if you keep debt service budgeted at one point five million, you see that in column C again. For several years. If you're willing to say, you wanna budget one point five million, not going up, not going down at all. You could approve the eleven point two million dollars, again, which is reflected in the middle of the page. And I I just assumed another five million dollars was uh issued out in October of twenty five. So that in in total, on the top, it's sixteen point two seven five, another five million. Now, what happens there? If if you follow it all the way over. If you keep that at one point five million dollars, it actually becomes, i- i- it's amazing what what good comes from it. Because not, you could borrow sixteen million dollars and there's no impact at all. That won't will not go above your current level. In fact, it goes down each year. So but but by by keeping debt flat, it 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 generates a lot of potential. And to see that visually, this is the the last uh slide I have on page twelve. Again, you see where you are in twenty three on the left hand side. Debt budgeted flat, you're actually gonna be making deposits to what I call a capital reserve fund, debt service fund. Or just let it flow down to your circles because you're not gonna need all of that that debt service. And it allows you to borrow another five million dollars beyond eleven point two million dollars. And in theory, I don't have any more charts, but if after twenty five and twenty six, if you want to borrow another five million dollars, you can too.
But then twenty five, twenty six, we're probably gonna borrow fifty million.
All right, now, if you start getting up to numbers like that, then it gets harsh to make it work.
But that's.
Right, right. But five to six million dollars could be slotted in in just the the runoff, again, on on that graph there. See, and you can see those green bars there are debt services that would be budgeted that you don't even need. And if you wanna capture that, you could use that to mitigate um another bond issue coming down the pipe. If it happens to be ten or twenty or thirty million dollars that will cause your debt to go up. You could plan ahead and have some kind of reserve fund to help mitigate that.
That's what I was gonna say there. So again, we're fine for getting this conversation.
Yeah.
Uh the point being, so that green delta in this chart behind me, that could be used to ease increase. If you do wanna grow up in two years and look at that chart. Again, talk about a eighty four hundred million dollar score, forty nine percent reimbursement rate from the state. You're looking at a forty to fifty million dollar bond. That number may go up, but you have some cushion to to reduce the impact. Further reduce it if you had some money in capital reserve.
I mean, I'd rather see chart, borrowing eleven million dollars, in three years, we're borrowing fifty million. And then do the whole.
So we could have Barry do that, like, we were trying to break it into small, we're gonna eat the elephant one bite at a time.
We did that example actually for retreat.
We did have an example at Ford Treat that we can pull back up. But for tonight, we wanted to like.
It just seems those numbers.
So I don't think, I don't think people, I think most people understand, it's people looking at that chart, yes, if we build a new school. We're gonna be filling in, right? All these things that, you know, maybe maybe we're gonna go over this line, maybe not. That's a future conversation on how much. I think, I think we all.
Right, but to me, it'd be clear to say, our debt is six mil, is six hundred thousand. It isn't one point five million. And just put that aside. And then look what's gonna happen with this six hundred thousand.
Didn't build that kind of new scenario, you could send it back now?
Yeah, I mean, I don't need it.
Yeah, no, we could share that. Well, tonight was really, um, very important. Like, he's not time sensitive. You know, uh like, we can, what we do and how we do it and how you clever it and step, we have time to manage that process. The Glenn conversation, though, is very time sensitive. We're gonna need the check marks to march this through. So we wanted to kind of have both ears because they're interrelated. Uh but the the procedural piece is very, it's paid by statute. The bond investment piece, we have lots of flexibility on how and when we execute it.
Maybe that's a question related to option four. So in that scenario, would we go out to referendum with eleven million? Or with a sixteen plus million? Or is this an initial plus and an add and addenda?
This was just an example. Again.
But if if that example were endorsed, how would that then up the referendum? Or would we go out with eleven and and modify? It would have to be reflective of the full scope of money.
We're I think talking about going out with the eleven and then in two years. So when Barry talks about some other communities, they almost have like every two years, there's a bond or every year there's a bond. Where you manage that delta between what's being paid off. So we wouldn't put that all in one box.
Okay, so that gets to John's point in two years. It wouldn't be five million. It would be a different number.
Right.
So we're still, we're the option four is just potential.
Right, just to give you an idea, that that that's a possibility. Five million dollars, if you were to down the road, phase two or three, whatever you call it down there. It's possible to do that and still stay under that one point five million that you're paying right now. So that that would stay flat and your budget, I would assume, would continue to grow, uh but that service would stay flat. And if someone comes up and say, well, debt service is putting too much pressure on our budgets, like, ironically, debt is not putting any debt service on our budget. In fact, if we don't do anything, debt is gonna take pressure off of our budget. And that's the decision, again, you have to make. You want debt to go to zero and use it to mitigate your budget. Or to try and keep it flat and continue to invest in communities and schools. That's the thing that Joe and I are recommending.
Yeah.
Manage that debt service line. If you grab kind of quick savings now, when that roof falls or whatever else, we'll we'll have no way to go.
Any other questions?
But I I just have a question on process. So do we like talk about, like, if we're doing this now? Right? Because it's saying, or do we have, we don't have time.
We do have to do a vote tonight. If we're gonna, if we're gonna go through.
So do we talk about, I guess my question is, if we're gonna do a vote, do we talk about it till now or are you gonna do it at the vote?
So we could have a discussion at the post time, right? Yeah, it's approval of resolution, right? Right, so that's in business requiring board action. So we could discuss it now or we could discuss it when someone makes the motion? Yeah, we need answers.
Maybe now.
Yeah, that would be, that's what I do on our.
Our our motion is to basically blow up the referendum.
No, no, no. The 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 motion that we're gonna, that we would have to do tonight. Would be to author, to to conduct a public hearing on March twenty second. It's not a commitment to the referendum. It's a commitment to have a public hearing on whether we should do the referendum, right?
Exactly. What you're doing is satisfying the time constraints that the statute's put on. So if we were to, if if, let's just say. Any hope to make that May third deadline. And that's, I think of that's, that's the end game, the referendum. You have to basically tonight, just basically authorize the public hearing that's gonna happen. Forgot what my schedule was. The twenty second. So, you know, you're just kind of getting the ball rolling. You're not committing to the resolution as it's written right now. You're not committing to sending it to a referendum right now. But if you don't do it tonight, then we're gonna be doing another calendar. However, outside of that.
Public hearing is percent, we want to spend one million dollars, we want it for a bunch of projects and we wanna go forward.
And and essentially what you're saying, you're gonna be doing what the district meeting will be doing, because that's who actually conducts the public hearing. Is that you're saying, here's what the board's considering right now. Eleven million dollar appropriation for this list of projects. And possibly borrowing bonds just to to basically pay for it all. And what you're looking for at that point is, that's in essence, the public's chance to give their feedback. You can certainly talk amongst yourselves at that meeting about it. It it's it's truly a um of putting meat on the bone sort of meeting. It's it's, let's see if there's a taste for it.
That's legal talk.
So just a question, like, so in that public hearing, just kind of, right, so we have a hundred and twenty one emails as of six fifty in favor of this bond. That we are just kind of discussing tonight. So do they have to like re-say, like, for us to kind of either buy and write this public here? I'm just trying to understand if the emails, what they've already told the board, or do like people have to like recome to a public hearing if they've already said, like, hey, I'm in favor of doing this?
Do you want to?
Just another.
Yeah, I think of the public hearing as kind of your chance to kind of take the temperature. See what people say, see what people don't say. Uh on a lot of these requirements, I'm not saying that this is gonna be the case here. Um I've been to public hearings that last fifteen minutes. They open it up, you're crickets for fifteen minutes and then everybody goes home. I've seen ones where people come in and you get three or four people. A couple say they like it, a couple say they don't. It's still gonna fall on you to decide what you wanna go for.
Right, but we could consider, so, you know. So we could consider that as part of our consideration on the twenty second, right?
Yep, I, in my calendar, I had your, the board making kind of a, called the final decision on the twenty seventh. So you'd have.
Twenty seven or second?
Twenty five.
I did twenty seven because I think you're meeting the twenty seventh.
We are.
And I thought that would also give you time to digest.
The twenty second.
The twenty second. I mean, you certainly, where you're not, sometimes boards have the public hearings truly because they have to. And they don't necessarily, unless something really glaring happens, a lot of times we'll proceed the way they intended to proceed anyway. Um this gives you a chance to kind of digest it a little. And when we go out and and say, again, somebody says, I don't want this project. Or why aren't we doing this? And you wanna tweak it a little. We can tweak it for the twenty seventh. You've had a public hearing, you're still good unless you added something totally unrelated, crazy. Um then, you know, we would probably have to re-T up or something because people would, people, when you give notice. They have to reasonably know what that meeting is about. And if you add something that's significantly different. Somebody can come in and say, well, that wasn't what the public area was. But if you hear feedback and. You know, they say, well, why don't you add some contingency costs or something? You know, you can add a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand or something. You can do something reasonable. If it's very big, something substantial or, you know, that that's significant, then that they would have to probably revisit what you're doing.
What, what, Heather, I'm sure.
So if we have the public hearing on the twenty second and we have an opportunity to talk that night as well. If we decided we were gonna vote on that. Then do we have to wait till the twenty seventh or?
I think you also have, if you were there, like you said, a lot of, a lot of districts, what they'll do is they'll have the district meeting open. They'll conduct a public hearing. They'll close the district meeting and the public hearing and then they'll convene. A a board of education meeting. At that meeting, that, like, you know, ten minutes after the close of the public hearing, you could decide. To go to the referendum route if you so chose. The thing would be is that it would matter whether that meeting's already scheduled. Or if it's, in some cases, when other districts have done it, it's been a special meeting. So you wanna make sure it's properly noticed and and such. That that's the only constraint that comes with that.
I have a just a quick question about the public hearing. Is there an expectation of a formal presentation to the public? And the reason why I ask the question is, we often have public comment after very lengthy meetings. And sometimes we need stability for people to to stay in the audience and provide an opportunity. What's the expectation of a public hearing? As far as what information's out in the public, anticipation of the meeting, a theory or something being discussed here? I just wanna make sure that if it is true public hearing, the public has enough opportunity to speak. Um so having not gone through this, what is the expectation as far as what's communicated to the public?
Public hearing is not restricted to to any particular format. You can do essentially what you want with that public hearing. A lot of times what districts will do is they will use that to make the resolutions available. They'll put materials out, like, why, why do we need the roof on such and such school? Um, you know, things like that. You you can certainly, in the public hearing, talk. You know, have materials that say, this is the best thing going. We need it. Um you you can do whatever you'd like. A lot of times too is on public hearings, uh much like public comment time. Um you can give people, anybody who wants to sign up and speak can sign up and speak. You can also give them a limitation. Uh, you know, a reasonable, you know, they can have three minutes or five minutes, you know, whatever you, whatever is a reasonable amount of time to give them their say. Um you can't certainly say, okay, clock's on, fifteen seconds, sit down, you're done. Um but they can, you can do something like that. Uh the presentation side of it. Almost can do whatever you want. There there is no, there's no boxes to check other than conducting it, strangely enough. Um but the thing is, is a lot of times what if, what districts will do, what towns will do is you use it for a chance to. In in essence, it's almost like your last sales pitch. Sometimes if you wanna say, if you, you know, you believe in the projects. And and doing this, that's your chance to to open the meeting and say, Paul, if you're like to speak or the board has a statement. Or we've got, um, you know, say, Joe's gonna kill me for using, so say, Joe could be there and say, here's the financial effects of it. Um, you know, you certainly can, some, you know, I don't know, that you've got somebody that, you know, usually like council have public works. People come up and say, here's why we need the roads because they're going, you can do. It it is pretty much wide open. Like I said, I've seen them open up a public hearing. Nobody says anything for fifteen minutes and then they close it.
Based off of that, I would just like to stand and say, by the anticipation of these sessions, so that the public, if they are in the audience. It's not a waste of time.
I think that what we've always done whenever we had public hearings, which we always do before a budget, that's always in whom the public is able to go. So, I mean, whether we do like a quick five minute.
Yeah, put the list up kind of thing.
Here's what it looks like. So they have something to look like. I think that's a nice idea, that it would pretty much be very quick. Yeah, do something like that. But that's really the time for the public. They know that they show at six thirty or whatever that they're gonna go.
I always just question, is our rules with the three minute talk by public supplier, do we have to set?
You would wanna, you, you would want to have that stated upfront. You know, say like when you, you know, you have the public hearing and a lot of times, like when towns, the public, they'll have like a podium up there with a sign and sheet. And they'll say right on the sign and sheet, sign it. and they'll say right on the sign in sheet, sign in, you know, and we'll take everybody in the order, and everybody will have three minutes or five minutes to speak.
So we said that.
Yes, it's just got, again, it's just gotta be reasonable that they get their say. You know, if it's inordinately short, somebody could say, well, it really wasn't a public hearing, because I didn't get to say what I wanted to say, or I didn't get to ask what I wanted to ask. But it doesn't mean you have to be there till midnight for one person to to talk and talk and talk. You know, it's still, you know, still needs to have some structure to be productive.
Is it the same, or we can't, we can't talk back and forth, though, sorry, you said ask, but we can't answer questions?
Oh, you can answer, oh, every, that's what the public hearings there for, they can come up and say, you know, it's, you know, excuse me, you know, a board of ed member, why do you think this is something, and you can certainly say, I, you know what, I've considered it, and I I like it, or whatever, I mean, it's 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 truly a public forum.
It is different, I'm kind of twitching, studies at the time on that, work back and forth with questions and answers.
I I don't know what the right answer for that is, I mean, I've seen ones where they've been so hurt, where they just go time, that's it. And and if you've laid it out as a rule to do it, it's fine, but you, a lot of times, what you'll say is, people have three minutes to speak, subject to the discretion of the chair or something, and if you have a good browsing conversation on something going, you don't want it to end right away, you can do that.
So I'm just, so one, I would just personally would want to sort of stick with that precedent, so you know, we've had other public hearings, and while three minutes, and everyone speaks, and then maybe after that, you know, someone can address, you know, some of the general questions that were at last, but I would personally hope that we might just follow our personal. But then, also too, to kind of what Mr. Inzias was saying, like, so in in my head, yes, I've totally oversimplified it, I feel like six hundred and fifty five thousand dollars a year for eleven point five million, like, that's just in my head. But I understand why this is my way, but when we meet on have a special meeting after the public hearing on the twenty second, or whether we will discuss anything until the twenty seventh. It was mentioned that at the book treat, you had the scenario where the spreadsheet had talked about what happens. Do we, do we want to be? Do you, do we need that as a word to see that in order to have these conversations on the twenty second or twenty seventh? Because I I don't want to necessarily be talking about new schools, like, I don't want to get.
I wouldn't doubt that, I would not, just, let's look at the six hundred fifty five thousand, period, just that. That's our debt for this bond, we're gonna borrow another eleven million to make up that six hundred fifty thousand, and how is that gonna work out?
I just, yeah, I said, I just, we have what we need without kind of kind of referring back to this. As a medical school.
But I would like to, just briefly, while we have you gentlemen here, because I don't know, the next time I'm gonna see you, it might be another year.
Next year.
So you may have picked up on this, but we're thinking about another bomb. I'm anticipating that being a lot more complex of a process, so we're having you in kind of at the eleventh hour, because we have to take action tonight, and like, if if you came next week, it'd be too late. Knowing that we're thinking about this for next year, how early should we invite you back to start talking about the logistics of a larger bond?
As far, again, with the target to get to that budget referendum date to it, I would say, i- if you really want us let us all sit back, take a breath, be able to proceed a little more measured, you can start the process as early as you'd like. I would suggest at least a month to the process we're at, or maybe even two. You know, because this way we can get our hands around what you, you know, what the scope of the project is, what the dollar amount is, what, you know, the effects of borrowing will be, and it probably would seem less daunting if we were having this conversation, say, in February, as opposed to we're here in March right now, and and there is, and the time ticks. The same clock would be in place, it it doesn't mean we can't stretch it this way, because most of those time elements are, you know, a you know, you've got to have five days notice, you've got to have that part of the thirty days, and the 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 work with the town for that month is gonna stay regardless of when you start the process. That's why pushing it back, I mean, you could have two public hearings if you want it, you could have a a a startup, have a public hearing, say you don't like it, and have time to retool it again if you so chose. You know, it it's, I know you're in your budget process, right, that that that's probably as stressful as a district can get. But again, push it out, you know, push us back another month, push us back two months, we could even start the process the year ahead, you know, like, say, in November or something like that, and start kicking things around, because the thing is, is you know, we can talk about all the effects and at a much more, frankly, casual pace, and it there's, again, those those deadline times, other than that last month, you know, we can talk and set dates in November if you want to. You know, we can do whatever.
In that centers too, I mean, we could do that as early as possible, now, now, just something to think about, if if there is this big potential project, projects down the line, I mean, my recommendation would be even stronger to keep your debt service budget where it is, because the lower you let it go, it's just gonna go that much higher when it does kick in. And then any number that you mentioned, whether it's fifty, sixty million, I assume that's a gross number, that it would be mitigated by. So we see some big numbers, I mean, like, like, the farming, the building, the high school.
Full number is gonna be one hundred, but if you're gonna get a forty nine percent reimbursement, so then.
And and if it is that that, I I doubt, like, you said, well, add fifty million, I doubt you would add, like, fifty million dollars of bonds in any one year, I'm not sure if you could spend that much. So typically what happens is it gets chopped into pieces that, you know, you do it over a period of time, which would help to mitigate. So if you wanted to see different scenarios, you know, rough estimates, we could start doing that, you know, as soon as possible, like before the show, pass that on.
This is two years out there, right, Joe, this isn't next year.
Well, no, correct, this is the drop, the drop of bombs. Drop about a hundred thousand dollars.
I said next year.
But I mean, but you're gonna do an, you're gonna do architectural study of of the two existing district, all that kind of stuff, and you'll have, I mean, they'll be part of this, but obviously we'll have, you know, dollar values on school costs then, and all that kind of stuff.
Because the the decrease in next year's budget, it's almost as though, like I said, you're almost missing that that drop, because even if if this project passes, and we do bond issue at any point July first or after, that first payment won't hit next year's budget anyway. So so the easier's catch up with you pretty quickly, so so that 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 drop off is really not as far out as you think it happens.
Let's say we put money in the bond, I mean, in the budget, for this bond, for real spending, we just put it aside?
Yeah, capital, your avenue would be a capital reserve. Yeah, because I know you're not allowed to have, you know, unlimited amount of excess funds.
No.
Back to those nasty statutes, they 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 put the kibosh on that, but.
Any other questions, particularly surrounding our motion that's maybe coming up? To make sure everyone's comfortable with just approving a resolution to authorize a district meeting on the twenty second, just want to make sure everyone's kind of comfortable with where they are. Yes, Richard?
About the same day at budget workshop. So this is a meeting, or is it a workshop?
We're gonna have two meetings, right, we're gonna have a district meeting that's noticed and a budget workshop that's noticed, so it'll be two separate meetings, back to back.
Two separate meetings back to back.
Appreciate. Cross your T's and dot your I's, Richard.
So bring your breakfast.
What time is the public? What time's the public?
Probably six thirty. Oh, five thirty, okay, got it, all right. All right, who said, I was gonna get time tonight, no, okay, we're just authorizing. Any other questions before we move on? Thank you so much for your time and your patience, really appreciate it, and you're you're stuck with us now? If we do go through the bond process and we get a bond, you're gonna follow us through the whole way?
Yeah, they're with us for four.
Yeah, Barry's been our advisor for how many years now?
You guys don't really issue a lot, I mean, just that.
Yeah, and he also is town of Middlebury.
Yeah, we've worked with Middlebury for for about fifteen years, and all we've been doing is following your filing your your financial documents forward.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate your time. Um, next, we have approval of the minutes, so may I have a motion to approve the minutes for February thirteenth, twenty twenty three, and February twenty seventh, twenty twenty three, regular meeting minutes?
So can we do them separately?
Okay, so then may I have a motion to approve February thirteenth, regular meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Steve, do you have a second? Sharon, second, um, any questions, comments? All those in favor? Okay, I may have a motion. You're abstaining from that one?
Yes.
Um, may I have a motion to approve February twenty seventh, regular meeting minutes? Thank you, Tom, do I have a second? Second by Shannon Cavalo, any questions, discussion? All those in favor? You're, okay, we have Mr. Inzias and Steve.
Did you make the motion to send it to the?
We have not.
Okay, I just didn't want to.
It's coming later.
Okay.
You want to stick around?
I'll be a marching band.
I'm supposed to make sure it's all checked and crossed, but I trust it. Thank you.
All right. And next, information and proposals for committee reports, policy curriculum committee, Ms. Heather Dwyer.
Um, I am sorry to keep you all unsuspended about the six thousand policy series, but we did make again, again today, six thousand series policies. We completed our run through policies that needed to be reviewed.
Any questions for Miss Dwyer? And next, we have finance and facilities, Ms. Shannon Cavalo.
So we've met on March first.
Right, yeah.
March first, um, so we discussed the pool study, which is where kind of that updated cost came in. And we also talked about interest earnings, there was a question, I think, there was at this meeting, on any money that sits in our bank, what's done with that, right, and that's minimal, right, ten thousand dollars, and then sent back to the town, and then we are going to circle back on facility fees, that's part of the revenue piece in the budget. And we kind of talk about the different tiers of our, both those that live in town and out of town, what they pay on use of our facilities, so we're gonna circle back and look at that, because there is some questions. All right, now we're gonna rebet a simple.
Any questions? Great, yes, we have P two advisory, Ms. Sharon Addix.
So the advisory met on March second, the focus of the discussion was about the budget and the bond, and our next meeting is April sixth.
Uh, next, we have a smart update, Heather Rogers. SMART will be hosting an event hidden in plain sight on April thirtieth at six P M at P H S for parents and caretakers only. It is a depiction of a typical teen bedroom, and all of the places that one might hide things they don't want their parent or caretaker to see. It is an incredible presentation, and probably one of the reasons I got so sucked into SMART, because it's really, it's really impressive, so anybody that can come to that, it's six P M, April thirtieth, and.
SMART is a Sunday.
Six P M, April. And, oh, sorry, March thirtieth, sorry, sorry, March, March thirtieth, I'm saying April. And the meetings have moved to the fourth Thursday of the month. March. Chat myself. All right, any questions for Ms. Rogers? All right, next, we have the superintendent reports.
Brief report tonight, just do your homework tonight, and we're monitoring the weather all morning.
Don't we, don't we kick into the next week?
Send them, send them for an hour.
Next, we have board chair comments, and I just wanted to mention something that Ms. Follow mentioned earlier, we got, since last week's meeting, we got well over a hundred and twenty emails from the public. Um, I have Ms. Meglio kindly printed them out, um, for anyone who would like to look at them. Um, they were all supportive of our budget, the bonds, the all various things, so just want to thank the public for reaching out, um, it's always nice to hear from the community, um, and, you know, we always take a look at the emails that were sent, so thank you so much for that, because it does impact on how we think as well, so, again, if anyone wants to look at it, got a nice thick title paper, you guys hear it? Uh, next, we have board member comments.
So and piggybacking on that, thank you for that input, but a reminder, that's a single percentage, I think, of people who actually voted on our referendums last year, so, well, it sounds like a big number. Work's far from over, the second half of this is no matter where we end up, so, but it's a referendum coming up today, uh, but thank you for the input. The other thing I wanted to say was, so stuck supervising a bunch of boys in a trampoline park for longer than expected over the weekend, and I mentioned this because I had some time on my hands to read the literacy waiver. With all hundred and fifteen pages of it, and I just wanted to say, I found it to be such a thorough and impressive document, and I'm looking at you, Carrie, I know there's even an acknowledgement in there about the many different stakeholders that contributed, but I encourage everyone to at least flip through it and just see the depth of thought and research and analysis. I just came away so impressed, and I think it votes, you know, really well for application state, but thank you to everyone in the region who spent time on that, it was clearly a big investment, I hope it pays dividends, and that's that, it's available on the website somewhere.
If anybody gets a chance, I want to find a different mission to go, or would like to see pictures, I had the opportunity to see the P B S door decorations for reading week. And they blew me away, they were so cute and so creative, um, and it really, it really makes the school so welcoming, and the kids had a great time, I think almost every classroom had their door decorated, and they were so excited when people were going around judging, are you judging the doors? You need to see this one, you need to see that one, so it was really cute, I took pictures of all of them, happy to share or give to Mrs. Clark, but maybe she could put them up for everybody else to see, but they were really, really well done.
All right, thank you, um, next, we have board business requiring action. Joe, can you just briefly run down the helping certification?
Sure. Basics, parameters on the food that we serve, what qualifies, the first one, obviously, allows basically can't sell Krispy Kreme donuts during the day, and second one allows you to serve different things at sporting events or the after school.
So we get the Krispy Kreme donut at first.
Yeah.
Like if someone brought these meetings.
Same motions as last year.
Has that changed from from last, no, same same motion, yes.
So we have to read each other, okay, all right, so who wants to take the first one? Okay, thank you, Heather, go ahead. Pursuant to C G S section ten dash two fifteen, the regional school district certifies that all food items offered for sale to students and schools under its jurisdiction and not accepted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July first, twenty twenty three. will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reversible meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups. Thank you, Heather. Do I have a second? Thank you, Shannon. Um, any questions, discussion? All those in favor? It passes. Thank you. Who would like to tackle the next one?
The regional school district fifteen will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards and beverages not listed in section ten dash two twenty-one Q of the Connecticut general statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interest scholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to thirty minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food and beverage section.
Thank you, Shannon. Do I have a second? Thank you, Heather. Um, any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Great, passes. Thank you. Um, next, may I have a motion for approval of resolution?
Move that the Board of Education approve a resolution authorizing a district meeting to be held on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three for the purpose of conducting a public hearing with respect to the appropriation and borrowing authorization for various capital improvements and renovations to district sports.
Thank you, Shannon. Do I have a second? Thank you, Sharon. Do I have a second? Any discussion or questions?
Yes, this is written by the lawyer.
That would have been a good question for them. All right, any other questions or discussions? All those in favor? Any names? Any extensions? All right, it passes. Thank you. You're gonna let our attorney know?
Email him now.
Right, all right, you let him know now, good. Next, we have comments from citizens. The Board of Education will recognize citizens of Middlebury and Southbury. And citizens are asked to state their name, their town of residence, and to limit their comments to three minutes. In accordance with region fifteen education bylaw thirty ninety-three twenty-five A, speakers are asked to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by their comments. While it is not the board's intent to stifle public comment, people, uh, speakers should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others, we know law, that nation or invasion of privacy, the speaker may be held legally responsible. When you come up to the podium, if you wouldn't mind, please sign in your name so that we have an accurate spelling of your name. We'd appreciate it. And unfortunately, I do have a buzzer, like the attorney was saying, I feel bad now, but that's what we were told to do by a different attorney.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Mark, I'm from Middlebury. I'm also the president of the Middlebury Small Town Alliance, that co-founder of the English Super District with me. And we just wanted to say specifically that when we founded the alliance, it was aimed at the fight against the distribution center that's trying to come to Middlebury. But our mission is to protect and promote the semi-oral small town character of Middlebury. And we strongly believe that a strong school system preserves property values and promotes a strong community for all of us in Middlebury. And it's not fair because we're a visual district. So thank you for your work, and that's to support you wholeheartedly. And we'll be back.
Anyone else? All right. Next, we have announcement of future meetings. On Wednesday, March twenty-second, we will have our budget workshop. As well as our district meeting, now we could say, uh, so the district meeting will, for priority six thirty, so we're thinking probably five or five thirty. All right. So Chris, with Chris, I mean, so we will, we will pull the board on time. All right, so the district meeting will take place anytime around five or six o'clock to be determined. But the budget workshop will be at March twenty-second at six thirty. So two meetings on March twenty-second. Monday, March twenty-seventh, P and C is meeting at the high school at six thirty. Also on Monday, March twenty-seventh, will be our regular board event meeting, um, where we will have our security update. Um, and hopefully a vote on the bond. On Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, we will have a budget workshop with the boards of finance, Middlebury and Southbury, preceded by a public hearing which starts at six thirty. And hopefully also that day, at some point, we're also gonna be doing tours to the board. Yeah, it's gonna be, we're not gonna go around to all the schools. We're just kinda just gonna pop around high schools. The meeting's here. Um, may I have a motion to move into executive session?
So as far as the budget workshop goes, I know we're depending on time. When I start thinking about right, that meeting issues potentially. The, we have to end the public hearing as prior to six thirty. If it forms labor for a really big crowd, we may find time if we make a motion at that time to have a second public hearing. It's gonna, Michael, we'll be able to get here if it's from five and six.
We can double check the return. I think you might pause it. You may, oh, let's talk to the attorney, get what options we have.
Yeah.
If you had a lot.
It's just five o'clock.
Well, we didn't send time yet. We said it, you know, we said that by five or five or five minutes, which isn't a problem if there's five people. But let's check. Right now, your vote isn't scheduled twenty-two, twenty-seven. So there's already one there.
If they then leave into the six thirty public comments anyway.
Well, the challenge there is we have already, you don't want it, well, I guess, let's check.
Like if they had comments, then we would have done at the five something, and they've come to six thirty, we're still getting comments from that.
We have some flexibility because it's a workshop, which has different rules and a whole media that has motions there, so.
Maybe we could make the six thirty meeting go a little bit later, so.
Right, and allow the five thirty or five point five kind of meeting.
And either way, we're here at six thirty. And it might not even be an issue, but I just, I just.
Let's, let's talk about what options we have, just so you don't violate the four year laws. Post it as transparent as possible. Let me talk to the attorney tomorrow, we can hold the board, um, and see. We don't want to start at four o'clock. Start at five point five, for example. Kids start at six thirty one o'clock.
There's a half day in the district, so for timing, I'm sure. I think people will be more around. If, if people who are, who have children want to come, but they're people without children. Yes, I, yeah, I heard about what I'm just saying. All right, so can I have a motion to move into executive session? Move that the Board of Education break into the executive session for the purpose of contract negotiations. Superintendent Smith and Mr. Martino. Thank you, Heather. Do I have a second? Second by John Inocius. All those in favor? Hi, thank you. So we'll move into executive session, just do a five-minute recess.